I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father.
The Lord. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily prayer, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Don Lofter, Jason Hanslaw, Roz Miller, Bob Davenport, Jeff McGee, Dennis Stiker, Mark Clark, Michelle Joy here, Abby Ayter, Shannon Steele here, Mary Atlanta, Donna Perlo here, Don Reer.
Okay, now prior to the meeting, we met in executive session, the council met from 6:30 to 6:52 on potential litigation matters. And then we obviously started again for our regular meetings. After the gentleman signs in, we'll...
Sorry.
We'll begin with our visitors. First up is Janelle McMillan Connolly.
Thank you for listening to the Trigusar Plan, and I was not able to attend the February meeting, but I sound better than I believe I should. And I just wanted to thank you for paying some attention to the roads in the Trigusar Plan. And there's been a lot of cleanup, which I greatly appreciate. I would say that I don't think the problem is entirely solved yet. I look forward to hearing what perhaps is planned. The gritty, grimy dirt on the road when it's wet is just, it's not pleasant. It's very difficult when I walk my dog, and everybody feels that dog walking is important. But when I take my dog out every morning, if it's wet at all, I have to put her in a tub and wash her. And it's not just dirt, it's gritty dirt. So anything that you can do further, I would very appreciate. Thank you.
Jason, do you want to hear what everybody gets here for the same issue at one time? Let them all kind of say their piece, and then we can do one update? Because are there more you'd plan on talking about the road? Is that something good idea? Yeah, go ahead.
You want to order?
Yeah, I think Michelle has a valid point, because if there's repetition, and then the answer...
I would say the same thing over five times.
And the answer may answer prior to you.
My name's Donald Connolly, I'm her husband, we live on 114 Arnold Road. I was just curious if there's anything in the budget, or have you considered paving the streets in the Trigusar Plan? I read in the newspaper that if the casino gets up and operational, Big Beaver will get $300,000 per year. And I would think that that would be enough that would be satisfactory to even pay over a period of time or whatever to pave those roads. And it would eliminate all the problems that everybody's complaining about. Second, I was curious if there's Marcella Shale money coming into this community. I don't know if there is or not. But if there is, that might be another source to pave these roads. I think by paving these roads, you eliminate a lot of headaches, and you won't have to treat them every couple of years either. I've lived here, we've lived here since 1992. And I'm very happy, very pleased with where we live. And the borough, and the community, and the services, the road crews, everything have done a wonderful job. But this is like a major headache for us. And I want to know if you have anything in the budget to pave these roads.
First of all, let me respond to what you said about the casino with the offering word "if." We're assuming it's coming. The way we understand it, you are correct, the figure is somewhere around $300,000. And it might be the case... See, we don't really know... First of all, we still don't know what caused this, and it sort of doesn't matter anymore. Because it is what it is. Now, it appears, without having our expert, the mayor here, his granddaughter was running in the Boston Marathon, so he was up there for that. So I can't fault him for that. But the point is, there's a possibility of what you were saying, that looking at it, how long would, quote, "paving," unquote, and I assume you don't mean concrete?
Asphalt.
Okay, alright. What's asphalt last?
On a local road like that, depends what you do. I mean, if you just do an overlay, you know, it could be three to five years. If you do a rebuild, which is much more money, you could get 10 to 15 years.
So what's the factor between the two in terms of money?
In terms of money?
Ralph? Twice as much, 10 times?
I'd say three to four times as much, yeah.
Three to four, okay.
And then concrete, 10 times as much.
Yeah, yeah, well, yes.
Do you have records of when it was paved last because we lived there at the time, that I believe in all the years we've lived there, just almost 27, it was paved once.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
And that's been twice in a time, it's been much longer than that.
Asphalt will last much longer than three to five years.
For the traffic weekend, I think.
Much longer.
Well, I don't know. So Don's the expert, so there we go. All I can tell you is, we're thinking about that, because since we don't know... And I'm not sure we ever will know what happened with this. Because we, you know, where do you go? Donnie, how many years have you been taring chipping with the borough?
33 years.
Alright, 33 years, this is the first time you've seen anything like this, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, there's a man with 33 years, so I'm telling you, this is a one-off. But we don't know if it's a one-off. That's what makes us tremulous, because is this something that will reoccur again with taring chipping? We don't know. We're not, because as I told those of you who were here for prior sets, sitting down, we don't know what caused it. And we can't seem to make any headway with finding out. So I myself am really getting spooky about taring and chipping. So as to a dense area such as Trigusar Plan, it's my mind that that might be the best course, would be the asphalt, back to the asphalt. Because see, the reason we were in a hurry to tar and chip it last year was because of the cracks we were getting in the road. We didn't want to lose it, you know what I'm saying? But I'm really spooky now about taring and chipping. And I can't say, oh, we're going to repave it, we can't say it. But as far as money's coming, as far as the money's from the Marcella Shale surplus, or whatever it's called, I think we once got $13,000, but I think that's how much we got. But I'm not sure that comes every year or not. You see what I'm saying, Don? Yeah?
Would you be receptive to a no-charge estimate on what asphalting would cost you? I'm very close personal friends with a fellow that owns an asphalt company. And I can get your free estimate.
I wouldn't have a problem, as long as they look at what we have now.
Because I was going to say, Jason, what we've been talking about, and talking with the mayor and Jason, and working a little bit with Lindy Paving, is having people come over and look at what's currently there. As we know it's not good. And working with our engineer and everybody kind of taking a look, saying, what are our options for fixing? Because we don't know that taring and chipping again is going to fix anything. So there's, as I said, we're in that position right now, where we have all, we're kind of working through all those possibilities. What can be done, what should be done, and ultimately, what do we need to do to make it correct? Where it's going to actually work.
I thought you'd be happy to have in hand what an approximate cost would be.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's...
Talk about it. It would be no charge to the borough or to me.
Well, what Jason, I think, is saying is, they need to look at what's currently there, because there is the possibility of, we may have to mill that there. We can pave on top there. We're not sure what needs to be done to it, from a technical engineering standpoint, to do it correctly.
Well, this gentleman might be able to give you some advice on that.
Oh, that'd be fine.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that's, we're not adverse to free advice.
He's from the North Hills, I know him from playing golf.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that sounds good.
And if you let us know when he's coming out, those of us that have kind of been, you know, working with this, can definitely come out and meet him there if we're able, Jason specifically.
His name's Scott Fisher.
Okay, and the mayor, because I, you know, with work, if I can be there, I will be. Sometimes I'm unable, but, you know, we can definitely meet him there as well.
Yeah, that'd be good, Don, because hey, you know, the more the mayor...
I can give you reverences from any places that he's done.
Okay, yeah. Because maybe these people will be able to say to us, well, you're really going to have to mill this. Right? We don't know.
Or base repairing, you know, looking at the cracking and deciding if the base needs... That's a three to five year, that's just an overlay without looking at it.
Yeah, yeah.
If the subbase failure is already there, that's...
And we're not going to cure it.
I'd say three to five years, but...
Correct, the overlay won't cure what's going on down below.
No, 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 it just makes it black for...
It's like if you don't prepare the surface with paint, you don't have a good finish product.
Correct.
Okay, alright. So that's where we are, and now, Don, yeah, have him... Give the borough a call, and then we can get his name, number, all that.
Right.
And do him a call, see what he thinks, and see...
I can have him get in touch with you personally?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be all right, sure, sure. Because I'm in the front book, and I'm available. I'm not always available, I still keep some...
Well, he can make a point, I'm sure he can make a point.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good, because... As I think all of you have to understand, we are not experts in much. So for example, we have an engineer here, and we have a lawyer here, because we're not lawyers and we're not engineers, we're folks like you are. And in 33 years, a man with 33 years of experience, he's never seen anything like this. We have no idea what happened, and I sincerely believe we're never going to find out. But I think, yeah, we have to get something accomplished here. And if it won't adhere, there's no sense of putting even this coating, or whatever you call it. You know, there's no sense in doing that. But we have to do something, and whatever we have to do, we'll have to do it. Okay, Marty, are you here about the Trigusar Plan, or no?
I don't recognize that name.
Okay, that's not, that would be a no. Okay, Don, okay, and the next person is Sarah Pennell?
Yes.
Hello, Sarah.
I'm Sarah Pennell, I live in Economy. And I came to let you know that I'm running for Beaver County Controller. I don't have any cards with me, I've run out, supposed to pick up more tomorrow. But anyway, I brought a few stickers if you wanted, and my slogan is "Yell for Pennell." So everybody likes that, especially the kids, especially the sheriff. He likes that "Yell for Pennell." But anyway, I'm running on the Republican ticket, and I do have an opponent, so I can't promise you I'll get through the primary, but I'm working very hard to get there. And if you have any questions, I'll answer them later.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Sarah, which this is a first, in my experience. We've never had anyone come and say, I'm running for so-and-so, check me out later on, we can talk. No, this is a first, it's interesting, thank you for coming.
Thank you, well, I have a web address, so you can go there, it's short and sweet.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Okay, Marty?
Yeah. I have just three simple things to talk about. First one's going to be waste management locally. Second will be state police versus something else. And the third will be redoing the comprehensive plan. So not really a lot to discuss, more to get opinions, unless you want to discuss any of them. So starting with waste management, there's a lot going on right now that's sparking the interest of a lot of folks in the borough. And it's coming to a good focus point now through the end of May. It's like a three-pronged approach that is aimed at primarily right now, road cleanup. Because everybody knows, Big Beaver's no different than any other community. With people throwing trash out of car windows, with garbage trucks fueling bags or stuff flying off the truck. And with people doing the most heinous thing, actually dumping furniture and tires, and paint and chemicals, and you name it. Because, I don't know, either because they don't have any place to put it, they don't want to spend the money, or they're just ignorant people, probably all three. So right now, there's a three-pronged approach to try to clean up the roads as they are now along the borough and state roads. And then we're trying to think of ideas for maintenance, perhaps with signs and reminding people, and maybe shaming people by calling them out publicly if we find them doing it. So as far as cleaning the borough road, something has already started that Roz Miller mentioned at last month's meeting, that if somebody on their own, can anybody, I have my back, can anybody hear okay behind me? Okay. If anybody wants to voluntarily clean up along their road, or any other road, and put the simple trash, what I call a car litter, I did it on Foxwood, and it's mostly plastic drink containers you get at a fast food place, men still have it lit on straws, lit with straws in them, candy wrappers, I'm sure you'll believe this, beer bottles and beer cans and Coke cans. And walking one mile, just on one side of the road, I collected a 30-gallon bag of just that simple trash. That was the week after Roz announced last week that we had a new program where if somebody left a pack of trash, the Big Beaver road crew would, when they found it, put it on a truck, and then eventually, through a new arrangement with Valley Waste, they would be able to leave at Valley, no charge to Big Beaver. So that actually worked. I left the trash on the side of the road on Foxwood, and the road crew picked it up at their convenience when they passed by, and it's gone. And since then, more and more of it's been going on. Now, I will say that there's some folks that have been doing it, like Doug had been doing an alley for quite a long time. And he was applying tires, and he'd bring it to a recycle place himself. But just since we started, I'll give you an idea of a couple of things that have gone on. This was just from yesterday, I copied what somebody commented on the Big Beaver Talk Facebook group. And it is from, I won't mention the name of the commenter, and it's a positive story. It says, "For your information, I just cleaned up over the hillside on Norwood, in between the cemetery and DB Ness, took about 10 bags of garbage out of there. There is still a sofa, tires, Jeep seat, and freezer, not sure what to do with that stuff. I left it up by the road, hopefully the township picks it up." Well, the township will pick up the 10 bags, but I, in my mind, they're not facilitated, and there's no discussion about them picking up the other stuff. But meantime, another gentleman, he happened to speak at last night's, I mean, last week's meeting, Sean, says when he's back in town, let him know if it's still there, we'll see if he can help out. So that's an example of how this is picking up momentum and interest, and people stepping up to do it. Now, last Tuesday, April 9th, a friend of mine called and said, and when he went home from work, he saw a Valley Waste truck lose a whole bag of garbage on 168, right off of Ashwood. And he said he was willing to talk to Valley, or anybody that wants to know how it could happen. He felt it was negligence on the truck's part, because it was just sitting loose on the back of the truck. He was riding behind it, it had not gone in the compactor, it was bouncing around, and he was just waiting for it to fall off, and it did. During the week before that, there were folks on his Facebook page saying that every time Valley comes by, this one lady said, every week when Valley comes by, she has to go out afterwards and clean trash up in front of her house that she had not left there, that spewed off the garbage truck. So I was thinking, aha, this is a learning opportunity for Valley to investigate what happened with that bag coming off, and see if Valley has an idea how to improve it, since this is not the only incidence, but it's one that we actually witnessed, and could explain to them what happens. So I called Mayor Don, I'm sorry he's not here tonight, but it's lucky for him he's not here tonight, because he's doing the better thing at the marathon. But anyway, Mayor Don said that he would call Valley right away and have them clean it up. He did, and made it. But during that discussion with Don, I had said, maybe you want to look at this as an opportunity to talk with Valley, and see if they want to investigate with the driver, if they want to see if more training's needed, more facilitation, more something to cut down the incidence of trash falling off the trucks. And he says, I can't tell them what to do, and that's not, that's not the point. It's like working with them as joint partners, just to make it better, not telling anyone. So I don't know if there was any follow-up beyond them just picking up the garbage. Anybody in council, did anybody hear anything from that Valley discussion last week with Don?
Did anybody else hear about it?
No, that's...
I've never heard anything about it.
I was just, okay, so we don't know if anything else came out of that discussion, more than Valley responded and picking up the trash, what they did. But I think that could still have a follow-up, because that issue still is fresh and new, and we could have a good opportunity for improvement coming out of that one.
Marty, excuse me, but we do have other business here this evening, no offense.
I get it, so, so I can, what would you, I can, I could quickly finish the other two, or I can go through the rest of this one. I'll go through the rest of waste management real quickly.
Here's the issue.
Yeah.
We have on books a three-minute limit, okay? Which we don't usually enforce, but since we're at seven or eight minutes now, you see where I'm coming?
Is it possible some of these might be discussed during the regular meeting? Or would you like me to discuss it?
I'm confused, we're in a regular meeting.
No, I mean, after the public has comments section of the meeting, when council discusses regular business, I understand that...
Or you could wait till the end of everything else, and then hold forth the, you know.
Alright.
Okay, you see the issue?
Would you like to meet after the meeting tonight?
We can meet, yeah, we can do that, yeah.
That works.
Okay.
If anybody else here is interested, subjects too, feel free to join also after the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Marty.
You're welcome.
Okay, okay, Donald, we already had, so that would be the end of the public...
Do you have to turn the page? Mary, there's more of them.
Oh, I'm sorry, turn the page, oh yeah, there's lots more, okay. Is it Cynthia?
Yes.
Salata?
Yeah, right there.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question about my neighbor. She has like a homemade ditch dug in her yard, and it comes down in our driveway. It's like beams like this, and down in our driveway.
Okay.
And the water flows through there when it's pouring, now it rains.
Sunday, yeah, okay.
And I wanted to get rocks from my driveway, but I don't, I can't, I'm afraid to get rocks, if it's not all going to wash away, so I just have a question about that. I don't know what I could do, who I could go to, about, tell her.
Shannon, our attorney, will say whether, do we handle that?
If it's the private property between you as a neighbor, it's normally a private issue that you have to deal with the neighbor. A civil action that you have to take up with them. If it doesn't involve the borough's property.
Okay, well, then I had one other question was about my other neighbor that's ripping my sons off my fence all the time, says no trespassing. And it's a dead end, and she's on her, and she's tearing them off. What can I do about that?
Sounds like a similar issue. Yeah, the borough, the borough normally can't get involved between two neighboring properties that does not involve borough property, unfortunately. And it happens in a lot of communities. So you probably need to seek private legal counsel to discuss your rights against these neighbors.
It'd be a shame, I moved to the country to get peace, and I get two evils. And now, thank you very much.
Yeah, well, isn't there something about civil versus criminal?
Well, that's the other issue, so some of the action may involve, you know, trespassing on your property, and you may be able to discuss that with the police. That wouldn't be so much concerning the rocks and the flowing of water coming down on your property, but with maybe the neighbor who's trespassing on your property and destroying property that you have placed there, you may want to call the police.
I can't put nothing, you know, none plants, none nothing, this lady just does everything under the sun. I don't bother nobody, I just stay, I don't know, I want to move from here. I don't want to know anything about the Beaver family. And I thought it was so nice when I first...
No, I'm sorry, but see, we frequently have had this over the years, that when you have difficulties neighbor to neighbor, in many cases, it's not under the purview of criminal acts. And then it becomes civil acts, and that means that the people involved can go to court, and usually that means a lawyer. That, and I won't even tell you the number of times we've had people come, and it's very similar. It's very similar, where it's between two people, and there is perhaps legal action possible, but it's not of a criminal nature. You know, so that's the way it works. Okay, Mary Ann Schweitzer?
Yes, I did want to speak out of turn when we were talking about Trigusar, so I apologize for not catching you on that, and going back to that. But I want to thank you all, council, for your work and getting with Lindy, and sending the truck to our plan. They did get a lot of the stones up. I spoke with Michelle prior this afternoon about possibly having a message sent to Don to see if Lindy could possibly come back and do the plan all at once, if time allows. We know that they're doing it out of the kindness of their heart, helping us out. So we know that might not be a problem, but like, it's just hard when they come and do little, you know, like this road and this road, but then there's stones, and they get drug like we talked about before. But we feel that perhaps, like, one more good run-through would help to eliminate the rest of the loose stone, because they did make a big difference. And so for the time being, to, you know, kind of pacify the issue until we can get it fixed in the correct way, I wonder if that could get passed to Lindy to possibly be able to come back again.
Like, and I said to Mary Ann, and just to finish that, she, we texted earlier, and I was going to talk about it when we did the road portion, but I'm going to reach back out to Don, because I haven't, when he was gone, and, you know, I haven't, so I didn't want to bother him, just to see if Lindy knows whether they're finished or not. And just sort of, we did offer Lindy, I mean, we didn't ask them to do it for nothing, they just are.
They're wonderful.
They just are, so, yeah, they are.
Yeah. They are on lots of pages the last time I was paid.
It was Lindy paving? No, I, I wouldn't have known that, yeah. So that's where, you know, like Jason had said about, talked about the paving portion of it. That's, we, all these things are kind of going on at the same time. And, and I'm sorry, it's always going to be Miss McMillan. I don't know that I could ever call her. I try to say John L., but it's just hard. It, you know, the, we've talked about that grit and dirt and I've nev-, we've never seen where the rain doesn't take it away. It's like, yeah, I mean, that's the crazy thing because you would think with all this rain, that stuff would wash away and. I just don't know. Kind of like we're beside ourselves trying to, Jason, did the gravel guy ever come? That we talked, was the guys coming to talk to us about what potentially could have been the problem and they haven't shown up, so we haven't, we haven't gotten that answer yet, but.
That's Bert and Ernie. Ernie never showed up.
He never showed up.
So we thought we had somebody to come and talk about it, but they, we haven't gotten that far yet. So we're still working on that and like Jason said, don't know that we're ever going to come up with the answer unfortunately, but, you know, we're going to push until we absolutely know yes or no, so.
And I heard from one person, I won't name him, but anyway, he's, he knows touring and shipping, an engineer, and he said in his opinion, it's an ionization program, which I believe one time at the meeting before I mentioned, which I never knew there was such an animal. And ex post facto, you can't, you can't prove anything. Because the ionization changes once it's in place. Who figures? Gravel science, you know. Okay, thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Okay, Cheryl?
I as well. Just want to thank you all for your efforts and you forced all. I watched him retire at home, the dust that this man has endured. And that is never what we wanted, you know, because I would stand with Lindy and watch him and I was concerned about his health for as much dust that this gentleman endured. But it's just too bad we couldn't have Lindy come in and spare him of all of that. But it is greatly appreciated what has been done.
And see, here's, you know, sort of preparing for the worst. I think I told you about how I went out and poked it, one area where it was coming off and it was breaking off just from my little gig. That might be our future there. In other words, we could have Lindy come and a week later, guess what?
More of it break off.
More is going to break off. I don't know that. I hope it isn't true, but I don't know. I was just surprised.
Well, the majority of it is just, my other question is very kind of Dawn to offer this gentleman and he knows, will that be offensive to Lindy paving after they've come in and swept the road out of the notice of their heart? I'm just, you know, I don't know.
Well, I understand that, but, but we're not saying that they're not going to be able to come in and look at it. I didn't say we weren't going to ask them to come and look and proffer an opinion.
Before I have to, it's forbidden.
And it has to be bid.
I have to say that. I, I never, that is not what I said. I said.
Well, you asked if it would be, if it were, would it be offensive? So my point is, it might be, but it, this has to be bid. And Lindy, as I remember one other meeting here, the gentleman did not seem to understand about bidding with a public sector, which we are. See, that's where people don't understand, yeah. So all I'm saying is, they could be, but even, no matter what, it would, once we decide what we're going to do, then we have to put it out for bid and we have to take by law, please note this, by law, the lowest bid unless we can make an argument that we've dealt with the bidder, that is the lowest bidder before and we don't like it and we had trouble. And then, as I mentioned before at the other meeting, they have a right to take us to court over that issue. And I, I hope you don't misunderstand. We don't make up these rules. We exist because of the state that's laying. That's who created the boroughs and the townships. And they make rules for us and we have to follow them. But I, I get your point. I really do, Cheryl. But the point being, I, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, maybe they would be offended, but they understand about bidding and things like that. They, they do. Okay, Buddy Pfeiffer?
Yes, Buddy Pfeiffer, thank you. We're building a new house over on Shaven Circle and down at the southwest corner of the property, there's some light brush and some light debris. Couple little trees that are actually are on an unopened road just south of the property. And I was wondering if it'd be okay for me to just clean up that area.
Sharon, it's a paper street that he, that he's referencing. So what authority do we, as the borough, have over what happens on a paper street?
Are we maintaining that at all?
No, 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 no. It's totally paper.
I mean, I don't think we approve it or disapprove it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would have thought.
So that'd be okay for me to do it then?
No, 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 no.
I'm not disapproving order for me.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
No.
I got it.
We have no authority over that.
Okay.
I mean, we do in the sense of what? People can't build there? But if Mother Nature puts trees there, I don't think we, because we wouldn't clear anything there, see? Because until we would, may, would decide.
If we're not maintaining it as of yet.
Now, the street we are, but then it dead ends and he's referring.
Yeah, and it's just off the end of the street.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I went over and looked at it.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I, so you do understand.
Understand.
We don't say yay, nay, or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, I don't know who owns that property. See, because the people who are on both sides of a paper street, if the paper street were to revert back to the normal world, let's call it, you do away with the paper street, then as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the owners on both sides get half of that.
Okay.
So the owners have that potential.
And then anyone that abuts it for right-of-way purposes still gets to use the right of way? If it's, if you can traverse it. I'm not sure if this street is in that kind of position. It's not.
What is it? It's growing up with.
Yeah, there's some light brush and.
You can't, you can't drive through it.
No, you can't drive through it.
Basically woods.
Yeah, it's basically woods and no one uses it as a street.
Right.
It's part of that whole development from years, years, years ago, yeah. So we can't give you permission and we're not telling you not to. We're not telling you.
Okay, thank you.
So go with Mother Nature and as the spanners say, whatever you feel like, whatever. I don't know. You do what you want. We, we have no authority in that direction.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, now, we have the minutes. I think we're all done there. We have the minutes from March.
Jason, you have it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Donald.
Yeah, I just want to, could I have a phone number? You can be reached by the.
Yeah.
Move out and depart the meeting.
Oh, okay, seven.
Give him a call.
No, separate.
Your phone number that this gentleman can contact you with?
Yeah, seven two four.
Okay.
Six five oh. Two nine zero five.
Two nine zero five.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's my cell, so. I usually answer it, but if I'm in class, I won't answer it. Or if I'm driving, I'm sorry, those are two.
His name is Scott Fisher.
Yeah, I got that. Thank you. And what's the name of his company?
I'm not certain.
Oh, that's all right. Never mind. Doesn't matter. Yeah, so we'll take advice.
I think it's Fisher Paving, a good man.
Pardon?
I think it's Fisher Paving.
Fisher Paving.
I think so. He's in the North Hills area.
Okay, yeah, hey, it never hurts to get different opinion on things. Okay, so we have minutes from March nineteenth and April second meeting. Everyone should have a copy of the prior minutes. Is there any correction, comment, observation? If not, do I hear a motion to approve these minutes?
I make a motion to approve minutes as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Bart?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, financials.
Oh, we started March with two hundred fifty thousand nine fifty nine twelve. We had total receipts of twenty-two, four thirty-three, thirty-seven. Expenditures of one thirty-one, seven seventy-seven, leaving us a balance of one thirty-nine, six fifteen, forty-nine. There's a list of the attachments behind here of the expenditures. Also, the pliget funds, the, we did get the class account. We did get the current year allocation for liquid fuels, so that gives us three eighty-three, six fifteen, fifty-eight.
Okay, motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the March two thousand nineteen financial report.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Thank you, Bart. Bart?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
The April bill list is also included. There are twenty-seven thousand four hundred forty in checks and twenty-four thousand eight eighty-eight twenty-four in automatic drafts. So that's a total of fifty-two, three twenty-eight, fifty-six.
I have, I have one question here.
Uh huh.
Thanks for the review on the bill list.
Okay.
I got to look at it a little closer. Will you have Virginia Binder, March Consulting to W. April?
Oh, that was probably just typed down the wrong.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be April.
All right.
Thank you, Dennis. With your ability, items regarding the bill list, there is a motion to approve payment.
I make a motion to approve the April two thousand nineteen bill list in case funds become available.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dennis. Bart?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, COG contracts.
The spring COG contracts were awarded. Becky has them for signature if there's a motion to accept them.
Motion?
What's part of the COG contract? What all is in, what is, what's all in it?
Different suppliers. Yeah, road materials, gas, oil, that's basically what we bid. Or we tell them we need it.
Yeah, and, and we don't have to buy at that price.
Okay.
But it, what this is for the audience is, COG is council on government and it's an organization of municipality, basically municipalities, and they do a variety of things, functions, one of which is this idea of you put together projected amounts of materials, I think that's what is in it, and then you put it out for bid, as I keep coming back to this bidding process thing. And that way, if, if you want to, you can, you, meaning for example Big B Roberto, if we want to buy from that supplier at that price, then we can. But if we can find it someplace else on our own, then we can do that. So we're not locked into buying through this mechanism, but sometimes it's advantageous, price-wise. And then, of course, the people who are, you know, supplying the bids, they, they get a lot of business that way. So that's, that's the, the basic concept here of what we're, of what we're dealing with.
Thank you, Jason. I just wasn't sure what all was included in it.
Yeah, no, that's all right. And I just wanted to explain for the audience because I never understood this bidding process before I got on council.
Well, I just want to make sure we weren't tied to it because of the issue we had with the chips from the tar chipping. I don't want to be held to something if we don't do it. You know, if it's substandard. So that was my biggest question. So you, it's like, thank you.
And again, we're not held to it for price, as I said. We can find it someplace else.
Perfect.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the COG contracts? And everyone understands, it's not like we're locking ourselves in, okay?
I make a motion to accept the COG contracts.
Second.
Thank you. Bart?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay. Then we have this motion to approve the March sixth pay for M. Nelco. Are we allowed to explain this or not? Yeah, we're not.
No.
No. Okay, so I don't know how to explain, but I can explain.
But we already approved that.
Yeah, you already approved it.
And then.
Well, I know, but for some.
In executive session, so you're just ratifying it.
Okay, so we want to ratify that?
Yeah, I just need, I need something else.
Tonight? Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion approving the March sixth pay for M. Nelco.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Bart?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
For purposes of the record, it's a personnel matter.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're dealing with. I apologize to the audience because for a personnel matter, it protects, I think it protects the personnel more than us. Is that the motivation of that law?
Um, yes, it would protect, put both the borough and you.
Well, I understand that, but, yeah, okay. All right, streets and roads, Roadmaster report.
I'm going to need one more guy for summer help.
Okay.
For lawn care. I text Jeff Rose the other day and he said he could start on Monday sixth.
And you think, you're saying only Jeff or Jeff plus someone else?
Well, Sean's already here. He's our full-timer now. He used to be part-timer.
Oh, I see.
We have Sean.
So you think Jeff and Sean would be sufficient?
Uh huh.
Okay.
For now, yes.
Now. Okay, so we need to vote on this?
Do you have the?
We don't have any, see, we have one.
Not until you have the, the people and.
So, so Jeff has, we've had for what, three years?
Three or four years.
Three or four years. He wants to come back for the summer, so we could vote on him, right?
He has to make an application, correct?
Yeah, he already did. He did.
Oh, he already did? For this year, the new one?
But he can only work, he can only work a few weeks, right?
Yeah, he can only work for mid-May to mid-July, so.
If I need another guy, there's a, another guy has an application now?
Yes, he does.
Oh, okay.
After he leaves, if I need more here.
Yeah, if he's still.
If we do the bill.
He's still available, yeah. Because, yeah, as far as our other two full-time members, you know, they can do other more sophisticated work, to put it that way, difficult work. All right, so.
So it's basically a rehire from somebody from last summer?
Yes. But we wouldn't need to vote, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, does everyone want to move on? Jeff, Rose?
I'll make a motion to rehire Jeff for the summer help.
Good, thank you, Bart. Second?
Do you have, do you have the, the pay and hours and all of that?
What was he paid before? Ten, ten fifty?
I don't know. I don't remember. Do we need that for the motion?
Is it going to be the same as last summer?
Same.
Well.
We don't know.
It would probably reflect increases.
It would probably reflect the increases, the yearly increases, maybe a small increase possibly, no?
I don't know.
Cost of living, you mean?
No, I mean, it would cost the living, no one.
Yeah, I don't think you're enough information, because you, you want, you want that as part of your motion.
Oh, okay, so we'll disregard that motion then.
Next.
And then we have to find out, and we'll have to learn what all the specifics we need for the motion.
Hours, rate, yeah.
Hours, rates, okay. All right, so, yeah. You know, Donnie, what you might want to do is check with this other person. You think this other person would be good?
I know.
Is he experienced, or she?
Yeah, yeah, he'd be okay, yeah.
Okay.
I know.
See if, what his plans are, what, you know.
He might even be working now.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm wondering, you know, as opposed to. Okay. All right, so that's, uh, the summer help. And, uh, Mr. Pfeifer talked about the Shadland. Paper Street. On going Norwood Drive, discussed that last time. Bart, on that generator business, what, what did you ever think about?
Basically, we're up to the point of who, who do you, who do you just want to hire for, for an electrician? Because that's all you need.
Okay.
You know what I mean? It's just to wire that in. And be in sort of borough, I suppose you'd want somebody certified.
Yeah. Okay. Because I do think we ought to act on that.
Okay.
Somebody with that wind made me think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if I've mentioned before, but I would, I would like to have a list of, hey, we use this electrician. We use this plumber. We use this carpenter. We use this. That way we have a go-to. I mean, I mean, I haven't been here forever, but I'm sure you guys have used, like the guy that does some of the work here. Over and over. If we have that kind of a list that we can go to, it would be beneficial thing if they.
Yeah, Donnie, the mayor's not here, but he might remember what electrician, the last time we needed an electrician. Who we used and how it worked out. Okay, so we'll sort of check that as needs worked on. And again, for the audience, what we, what we have is a situation where we have a generator. But we want to be able to wire it so that if the electric goes out, we'll be able to get our garage doors open. At, at the Borough Garage to get, for example, the trucks out to, wow, you know.
Automatic with a transfer switch, or just when you have to start it up manually?
We would start it up manually and then, and then it would, of course, the way they wired it, it knocks out the rest of the main breaker. Because you can only have one on without the other, it's a switch. You switch it over, it knocks out the main breaker, and then you run off of the generator. So no, no power could be fed out to an electrician or somebody fixing something on the wires or, you know, out there to hurt anybody.
Okay, I could see after the meeting. I know a local certified electrician.
Sounds good. Sounds good, Marty. See, you guys are really good for us. You bring us good information. Yeah, that's, that'd be good. And, and I think we do try and deal locally when we can.
Yeah, he lives in New Galway.
Well, that's pretty good. Okay. Now, I think Roz is, I think, I think she talked, did she talk to you about a re-bringing the road to her back? Okay, so did you two make any progress on that, or?
No, I, I mean, now that we're through her last frost, it's time to schedule it. Uh, we have the old database that we set up years ago. We're gonna use it for doing ranking.
Yeah. And again, for, for our residents, it's, it's where the engineer, our engineer and some members of council go and literally ride around and see what's going on with the roads and the Donnie rear. And then make an assessment of what is, what prioritization to some degree.
To condition the roads and traffic levels, and you do a prioritization that way. But in Hires and Township, we did a ten-year program, ranking the roads that way.
Yeah. Okay. Top of the nation, don't need that Roz.
Yeah, I can give it up, Dave.
Thank you, Michelle.
The, uh, disc golf, uh, the guys are still out there working. They're, they're normally out there every weekend now that the weather has gotten better. I think they're up to hole number fourteen is pretty much in good condition. They're working from fourteen to eighteen to continue clearing the, um, the fairways. Now, I did get a message from Don Rambo over the weekend, the gentleman running golf. They are now at a point where people are starting to kind of get wind of it and coming out and playing. At least the beginning parts of the holes, the first nine that are done. Um, so he showed me pictures of a, and I don't have them, and I'm not, I, I didn't print them out for you guys yet because I just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention. I need to get some more information before I move forward. But they're at a point where they're ready to put up like an information board, is what it's called, um, at hole number one. That basically they can post information about the course. Eventually, a course map would be on it, things like that. And it's basically a rectangle-shaped type of board, you know, made out of.
We can see if Brad is.
Yeah, and it has a little roof over it to keep stuff as dry as possible. He said it would be possible for the borough to build one of these. Not, not us, I mean, obviously we'd have to hire somebody. So I just told him I had to look at our budget from Parks and Recreation, see where we stood, um, get some ideas. So once I, I didn't before the meeting, get a chance to look at that. So once I get an idea of the budget, um, get an idea what something like that costs, I'll come back to you guys for approval on spending the funds and.
Well, didn't he have somebody locally that, uh?
I don't know if he does or not.
Somebody said that they, that does stuff like that.
Do that Facebook or thing, or a couple of different people locally that might build something like that. But I told him I needed to, one, we have to obviously approve funding expense, and I need to figure out what that budget is because I don't think we spent anything so far this year, and I think it's five thousand dollars. But I need, I need to get an idea of what it would cost. And then once I have some ideas, would you guys prefer to approve it, once we have the cost of what it would cost to actually build it? Okay. All right, I'll get some bold movement on that. I'll talk to Jeff too about it. And then, uh, will be more updates on that. But that's what I've got so far for disc golf.
Okay. And no change on the covered bridge. Okay.
Now, what, before we leave the disc golf, didn't they want, uh, they needed some gravel too, didn't they?
Yeah, they got some. Did you get gravel down to the guys? Yeah.
Melon.
Yes, he, I know they said thanks. I think on Facebook they posted the same thing for stuff, yeah. Yeah, they got what they needed. Thanks, Donnie, for that.
All right, and we have, I think it is, I didn't have an opportunity to review it to any degree, but I think I know what it is. I think it's the Blackhawk football program wants money. Is that correct?
So it looks like they want us to put an ad in their football program.
Yeah, okay. Well, that means wanting money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm not in favor of this type of thing.
Again, it's not, uh, we turn, why don't we turn down the baseball program, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we donate to Beaver Falls.
We do it for Beaver Falls every year because that's our school district. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of doing it for Blackhawk, because.
Yeah, because I think, I, I really think that we have to be careful because there are many worthy entities out there.
Agreed.
You know, that's, might be, so unless someone has further discussion and wants to make a motion, they just pass. Period. Now, you want to go now? I mean, you want to get to your section first, or next?
Sure.
Shannon?
Thank you. The Seltar update is what indicates is ongoing. Um, I received a redlined version of the developers' agreement that I forwarded over to, um, council for the Seltar group. And I'm in the process of reviewing the requested changes. I don't think that the modifications are all that significant, so I think we're close to getting a finalized agreement. I was contacted late this afternoon by another developer. I'm gonna call him in the morning. Um, they want to do a developers' agreement for Cross Gates Inc. Uh, I don't know anything because he just left the message.
Does that ring a bell?
Robert Sapsera. I'm gonna call him tomorrow morning. I'll get more information for council.
Does that ring a bell with you at all?
Cross Gates, the one they're doing, uh, lot six.
Oh, up in the west.
Yeah, up in.
Well, they call themselves Cross Gates Inc., because that was his email.
Yeah.
I know there's West Gate.
What was the last name? S. A.?
Sapsera.
Sapsera, yeah, that's him, yeah.
So I'll call him tomorrow morning. Um, there was an excess maintenance agreement, road bond that my office prepared. I did get your message, Becky. And that was emailed to Mr. Couverton. We've done, we've dealt with denoting lumber, or lumber for several other bonds. So he'll probably be coming in to the borough building to have it signed. Um, but I did have my staff email him this afternoon. And I did get your information about the already approved resolution for Michelle. And that was fine. Um, I think that's all I have to report. Everything else we discussed was an executive session concerning location.
Now, did you, Michelle, did you give Shannon a copy of the chicken ranch? Oh, no, excuse me, the chicken ordinances?
I don't think I gave Shannon those copies. No, because that's right, we talked about them, I'll get them, you know. That's right, I forgot we have to come up to them. We have to come up with language to have that. Okay. There's, um, I ran somebody come in that would like to have chickens in the R2 zone. So we talked about amending it to include that, but we need to come up with answers. But I will get you the two resolution, or the two ordinances from New Brighton, and I think, where was it? Beaver. That we have on file that has language in there of it, so.
I was part of Beaver's. Okay.
Without a stringent.
Yeah, yeah. And then I have the municipal authority meeting tomorrow night, so I'm sure that Jeff will update you about the last meeting. But, um, we'll have more to report hopefully after tomorrow.
Okay.
And thank you for excusing me.
Yeah, and everyone on Comp has got copies, didn't they?
Yeah, I had them here that night. I forgot it was at the last meeting, Shannon wasn't here, so.
Well, that's all right, yeah.
So I was supposed to.
Yeah, so it's, it's something I, I would encourage. I would encourage everyone to read, you know, because there are pros and cons and.
I mean, it is something that is becoming more frequent.
Oh, yeah, it's all the raids in Pittsburgh, they're keeping chickens, you know.
Yeah, it's significantly in urban areas because of urban farming.
And the fact that they eat ticks is the biggest thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
Because there's an awful lot of ticks out there.
Yes, there is, yeah. Well, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Jason, can we add one quickly for public relations? Just have an update about the website?
Oh, okay, sure.
Um, we have, uh, Becky and I worked with the people over at PSAB to get the correct login information for all of our stuff, for lack of a better word at this point. Um, and Becky has converted all of the, you want to hear this, Kim? Becky has converted all of the minutes from Word documents to PDFs, so they're all up there as PDF from all two thousand eighteen and updated for two thousand nineteen. So that's all updated. Becky has the process to do that, so after every meeting and the minutes are final, show up to, I'll continue to update those as we go on the website. Um, I have not unfortunately had time to get in there and play around with updating it and adding more content. Um, I know Roz and I talked briefly today concerning that, and we're going to be working on it and reaching out to every different committees and trying to get more update and more content. And talked to Dawn briefly about getting some of that stuff and zoning maps and stuff like that. We just have to kind of figure out how to do it, so. They also offer through PSAB, I think, eight hours of web development time. So, um, that is part of whatever our membership is with them on a yearly basis. There's additional time. If we want them to maintain it, we could purchase. But he said if it's not a horribly in-depth website, which most of them aren't, and most of the ones that they have, they've done. For a lot of them, I shouldn't say most, but a lot of them. Um, he said they could do pretty much anything we would want them to do in eight hours' time. So I say let's start with that. Let them do it because it's paid for, and then we can go from there. So we just have to organize it and figure out what we want. But that's just an update on our website.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Okay. So who's gonna take the pictures?
Well, we'll, don't be smart. We'll figure that out.
You're the one who raised the issue that we should have more pictures.
I did. I can take some pictures. I also, there's the people who live in Big Beaver who take fantastic pictures. I could reach out to, so, um, we're working on that. So, okay, but it is, it is, we're working on it. It's, and with everything else, it's not gonna happen overnight, but I'm doing my best. Go.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, where are your, oh, planning commission?
Okay, uh, everybody has a copy of the minutes from the planning commission. Uh, some of the highlights here. We had three members show up for the meeting. Uh, Mr. Bob Rice came to our meeting. He would give us an overview of the plans for the Westgate Business Park. Uh, he mentioned there's four progress set for the, uh, business park in the near future. Uh, one is a thirty thousand square foot flex building located on lot four. Lot four is you enter the building across the tracks off to the right. Uh, there is an electrical utility expansion in progress along Commonwealth and Enterprise Drives. And the land development plans by Cross Gate Incorporated. That is lot six. That is when you make the right turn off to the left. There's that large area there. Uh, also in his plans, there's, uh, and in this lot six plan, this will include three buildings for industrial slash distribution use. Also, the detention site for stormwater control will be revamped, so future lots, number six and number seven, that goes all the way through the park where they have the quality sack at the end. As you make the left, they're extending that across the gas lines.
Excuse me, Dennis, did you say slag?
Slash.
Oh, slash, I'm sorry.
Industrial slash distribution, okay.
All right.
Uh, negotiations with Dominion Gas have been finalized, so utilities expansion across the, uh, pipe lines are not permitted. That was a problem. Uh, let's see. At the last line, we had discussion at the tables we're creating for a permitted usage, conditional usage, and special exception. John Howes creating a list for us. Uh, we didn't get much in that until we had more members present. Uh, John Howe reviewed the Westgate Business Park, Commonwealth Drive, pavement, public utility expenses, subdivision plan with the planning commission. This will provide, this provided a right-of-way for the proposed lot seven. The one item listed in their review letter has been provided in a revised drawing. A motion was made to recommend council's approval of the Westgate Business Park Commonwealth Drive, pavement, public utility extension subdivision. We'll do that. That's part of the Larry's report there. Uh, all members approved this motion. Uh, we went into the Westgate Business Park lot six land development application. They had, uh, they did a review on it. We had about four pages that there was items that we'll, we'll have to get around to. So we tabled the issue, but what I understand is they contacted John. These people here from, uh, will, uh, Cross Gate will be at our next meeting. So we'll be moving on on that.
What, what do they do, Dennis, do you know?
Cross Gate, well, who bought it was Adam's place bought it, but these are the developers. Cross Gate is the developers there. And, uh.
But developing for what? I mean.
They said warehousing, I understand.
That's what they said, warehousing.
Yeah, so.
All right, that answers that, yeah.
Uh, we've discussed, uh, the Geo Petro compressor station LLC. That's at, uh, the wall site. John mentioned that they will probably need a variance because it'll be a commercial business running in a residential area. Rural residential area. And also they will need a land development approval for that. And, uh, also, we're, we're getting a new subdivision land development. We're having that done. And he came up with some idea that we might want to change in that one, so. That would include like how many copies do we need? We said we don't need fourteen copies anymore. No, yeah, that right, that got out of him, so. And that was about it. Kim, anything you want to add?
No, I think the biggest thing that I liked out of that was to eliminate the number of copies, but to do more electronically as well.
Yeah, I don't know how that costs, fourteen, I don't understand.
They want to do away with these private, the roads too.
Pardon?
When they develop, do we want private roads? That's another thing that was brought up.
Yeah, they didn't eliminate it.
Right.
Okay, what?
When a residential development, you can have a private lane. When a residential development, you can have a private lane going back to these homes. We don't want that anymore.
What do we want?
Borough roads.
Okay, why? I'm not being smart with you, I'm just...
I thought it was just an access road.
Right, right, it's, yeah, they, they don't want a private, uh, lanes for various people on this. When, under new developments, they don't use that anymore. You should have borough roads.
So if you, if, if someone buys a hundred acre plot in Big Beaver.
Right.
And builds this development. They can't have their own interior?
Who will maintain it, then?
Pardon?
Who will maintain it?
Well, they could have a cooperative group within the homeownership.
Well, that's something to consider.
No, I'm not being smart.
No, but I see what you're saying, yeah, maybe that's something to consider. But that doesn't seem to be the, uh, common practice anymore.
Is it Laurel still like that? Isn't Laurel private?
Yeah, we have existing roads like that.
That's what I thought, there was a couple, I knew that was one of them.
That's right.
The discussion also took place about how many homes would be developed and the length of the road. And a lot of it dealt with access, like if there was a fire or if the police were needed back there. Um, you know, if the roads, if you had a hundred homes back there, if it's a private lane, that wouldn't be reasonable. I mean, a fire truck may not be able to get back a lane that hadn't been plowed because it's privately maintained, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's more about, and also addressing the issues as well.
Yeah. So then, what you're saying is that we can legally mandate that they have to have public groups in a development?
Yes, that's what I understand.
Yeah, part of it was to say that you could, if there were so many homes or how far back the lane went, things like that, that was all gonna be part of the...
Well, it'd be access to individual property. So if you subdivide to a hundred lots and there's only access from a private road, who owns that private?
Gotcha.
It gets messy there.
Oh, yeah, we've dealt with it here with our private roads. If we have at least three of the total I had.
So we can eliminate that.
Yeah.
And they have to build a road to borough spec. So that's, that's the other.
Okay.
Because sometimes private development...
Yeah, that's, that makes sense because I look at some of the people down on the ones we have off of the angle and it's, it's a problem in the winter time. It is, it is a problem. They just break it.
Dennis, I have a question, Jason, I'm sorry, if you're done with the road portion of it, I'm curious.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have a map or were you given something about these lots six and seven? Just so I can get a general idea, or a copy of it after the meeting? The only reason I ask is I know there are two pump stations for the sewer down in Westgate. One of them has nothing going through it and isn't hooked to anything. So I just want to make sure if they're gonna develop, we let our operator know where it is in case something could change.
That's Lot Seven there, what's in written.
I believe the large plans are still there too.
What's that, Kim?
I believe the large plans are still there in the building as well.
I just want to make sure Chad gets an eyeball on it and he can make sure that there's not gonna be any issue. I don't think there is from the look of this, but, um...
See how they extended the road?
Yeah, I did, okay. Yeah, I'll make a copy of this after the meeting before you leave.
Now, where was that road they extended, the shooting road?
Yeah, beyond the shooting range, but, yes.
I just want to make sure it's not gonna, I don't think it will, but I just want to verify that with them.
So hopefully that eliminates the shooting range also, once that gets developed.
Yeah, unbelievable.
Shooting range I'm referring to, they can shoot down at Westgate Business Park. There's been some shooting down at the end of the road. There's brass lying everywhere. They've taken trees out with them out of shooting. I mean, it's unbelievable. And as you leave, they can't seem to turn it off. So they hit a couple of stop signs on the way out, so, you know, you can easily, so, yeah. We have to prevent that. Okay, that's all.
All right, Ms. Porter.
Uh, for our meeting from, uh, March twentieth, um, we did have, uh, a representative from Cartrel and Arbatina, uh, came to talk to us about our audit, uh, from twenty seventeen. Uh, because it wasn't a good audit, um, and there was a lot of concerns on there. He did come and take time to explain, uh, really, you know, what he, what he described as a, a plan in place to improve, uh, improve it going forward. And I'm sure he knows, uh, what our plans are. Um, but he did want to, uh, make sure that we understood that, that, that audit and the improvement. Uh, so that was a big part of the meeting. Um, also, um, uh, engineer was not there, or no, he had nothing new to report. Um, um, so there was nothing there. Our operator, um, uh, let's see here, uh, he, um, um, he wants to be, uh, set up, um, so that there's a monitoring systems in each of the pump houses. And, uh, but what that, it goes to Beaver Falls. So it doesn't do him any good. So if there's an emergency, um, by the time he gets notified sometimes, it's too late. So, um, he's working to get it switched over so that the monitoring system goes to him and he can get there, uh, very quickly to get anything taken care of if it becomes an emergency.
Excuse me, Jeff, do you or Michelle know, how's that work?
The SCADA systems, they, um, what it is, is it's through, like, there's, I believe there's cell service in them. I think you have to have cell service in each of them. Um, and it goes to an email and then you can, you can set it up how you want it. It'll either go to email or text message or phone call. Like there's, I think those are three different options. What happens now is Jeff, is Jeff, here, Jeff. Chad has the information, uh, for Beaver Falls for those systems. And he can then log in and check the, and it is through email.
Right.
But it goes to Beaver Falls and he has to physically go check it. Once he gets all the contact information changed back to him, he can set up high ones notifications and he can get a text message the minute it goes off.
That's what I was wondering.
So that where he gets notified right away versus having to every couple hours just go in and check them to see if anything's there, which is how he has to do it right now.
So it's by a cell phone?
I believe it is, I believe it is, I believe it was mobile service, yeah.
The reason I'm asking, you know, I don't know exactly where all these are. But, you know, in some parts of our borough, you can't get out with this stuff, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's actually not every one, not every pump station has them. He's identified the few that don't have it. The bigger ones do. I wanna say four out of the seven maybe have it, I don't remember. That was...
The big, the ones with the most use.
Yeah, the three big ones, I think it's College, Stockman Run and, um, Wallace Run. But, um, the, it's all through cell service. Because there is, we have cell phone bills for those, right Debbie? Through the, you know, yeah, there's cell phone bills for those ones. And they're for those, those systems. So it's all kind of cellular type of, they have a little antenna, I think, on the structure themselves, I believe.
Um, for the turnpike lift station, uh, we passed a motion to replace the block heater in there. Um, approximate cost was a hundred and fifty dollars, but that one didn't replace right away. So we made a motion for Chad to get that replaced. Um, I think that may be, um...
Any progress on the unpaid bills?
Uh, Catreous Cove, um, uh, that's being bought. So we should see money from Catreous Cove because we have a lien on it, so, um, that would have to be paid.
Yeah.
Um...
And that's significant, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, it is a good, a good amount, so, yeah. Um, uh, let's see, what else? Um, that was really about it, just, uh, general business. But those are probably the, probably the highlights. Uh, like I said, the biggest portion of it was talking to, uh, the auditor.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Do you want to talk to this?
Me?
No, no, the office, you...
Well, yeah.
Me too.
You do? Okay, all right, I know. Uh, he's gonna be giving you a copy if you need it. But you do, you want to answer, sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Michelle, you have items for public safety?
Um, yeah, if you guys recall, last meeting, Adam Crepp was up, talking about the new fire truck. Um, that he, that was new to us, like this fire truck through Beaver Falls. Um, so we just need to make a decision, uh, and go on how much money we plan on giving them if we plan on doing it to help them, uh, offset the cost of that so they can get it while rolling with the bank. Because they did get, he did text me and they did get the approval from Beaver Falls and it is all set at forty thousand dollars. So that is the price. Um, I know I spoke with Jason and I think I mentioned before, you know, I don't think it would be, um, a bad thing for us to offer up half of it. I don't know what everybody else's feeling on that is. Um, but do we want to discuss it or do you just want me to make a motion? I don't know what everybody else feels.
Well, I, I think I would like to say that I'm very thankful for, that we have an ongoing vibrant, compared with everybody else vibrant. I know it's not the old days. But we have a vibrant, um, equipped and certified department.
Yeah, and the mutual aid agreement between us and Beaver Falls with having that truck actually down there coming out of, you know, that location to service everything along with working and offsetting the teaming that they go with Beaver Falls is really an asset that I think is beneficial to all of them, in my opinion, from a public safety standpoint.
Yeah, again, to explain to our residents in attendance, uh, down at a company called Morgan Brothers in Beaver Falls, the fire company, our Big Beaver Fire Company has a truck station down there. And that's because X number of the employees are firemen for Big Beaver. So they can have that truck rolling out of there very quickly because they're at work there. Does everyone get what I'm saying? Whereas up here, I mean, a lot of people don't work in Big Beaver, you know? I mean, hell, I mean, heck, we might have guys working in Pittsburgh. So this is just a way of having a readiness that usually you don't have. You, you really don't have.
With the change in, in like the, the, the way things have worked, um, just with the nature of technology and, and how things work with, uh, with, I don't even know what I'm trying to think, how we've progressed, um, where the mills aren't here anymore. You don't have the shifts, the twenty-four hour shifts where you know there are guys that are gonna be home during the day that aren't at work. The people down at Morgan Brothers allow these guys, if there's a fire call in Big Beaver, to stop working, get on the truck and go at a drop of a hat, which doesn't always happen. And like Jason said, we can have some firemen working in, in Pittsburgh who can't make a fire call, so.
They don't have the people working local like that.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. BMW, a lot of the guys work at BMW, they're close by.
And so if they're needed in Beaver Falls, a lot of times these guys will go out and assist Beaver Falls, which in turn then Beaver Falls in turn then assists us. They have the tower trucks or the ladder trucks where we don't, things like that. So it's kind of, uh, they, they work together and it's a, it's a really nice thing that they have going. And, um, these guys are able to upgrade a truck that Beaver Falls is, uh, getting rid of that will be a big upgrade to the truck that's currently there. So that's what this, this whole thing is discussing, so.
And I think we really should thank our firemen because we all, if, you know, if you want to be very individualistic about it, your insurance rates, to, to some degree, depend on what those guys do, their certification. Because insurance companies look at that type of thing, all right? And our guys are pretty up to snuff in terms of certification. So it's, it, it's, we're just lucky to have them.
Of course, all volunteer.
Pardon?
All volunteers.
Oh, yeah, that's right, oh, thank you, Molly, that's right. In case people don't know, it's a VFD Volunteer Fire Department. And, see, another thing that, I, I know, I didn't know before I got on council that we as a borough by the state again are charged with public safety of the community. We're supposed to do that. So if these guys closed up their shop, as many of the small communities are seeing, then we would have to hire, like Beaver Falls or, I don't know where, Chippewa? And we would have to pay, we as a, as a borough would have to pay because we have to have fire coverage. Does everyone understand this? So it's, that's the way it is and I think we got a great group. And again, we're very lucky and thank them. So the point becomes then, as Michelle and I had talked, of helping them out to get this upgrade truck, which I don't know a lot about, about fire equipment. But forty thousand dollars, I have neighbors where I live and they're spending that on a car.
Yeah.
Okay? So it's, it's a very good deal for the fire company. But they work hand, you know, they work hand in hand with, uh, with Beaver Falls. Okay, so I don't know, does anyone else have a comment or question about this?
Then I make a motion to, um, give the fire department, it would be half of the forty thousand dollar bill, twenty thousand dollars to offset the cost of them purchasing the new fire truck.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, zoning.
Just report everything, you know, one copy please. Pardon? Talking to Larry.
I'm all right. Well, you're hanging out.
While you're at it, pass them down.
I have a question before I start and that would go to Dennis in the planning commission.
Yes.
Um, Becky just brought to my attention that there were plans in the office for a building permit for one of those buildings. So is, is this approved? Has this, are they to the building permit stage? Because, um...
I, I didn't even see, I just noticed it said, yeah, building number one. And I had, I have no idea what they're making reference to. Now, I don't know if that's referring to, uh, lot number four as you go inside the, uh, the park or not.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to look at it. And I'm thinking, and Larry's looking at me, I'm thinking that maybe that's like getting a little ahead of themselves. They all need some direction.
That'd be, I think we had to check with Shannon. There's developers agreement in place because that already went through land development. Lot six is early, it's early. Lot four is...
I'll have to take a look and see which...
Yeah, I, I didn't look at the print.
Yeah, because when I, when I just came in, Becky brought it to my attention. So I haven't, I haven't even unrolled it yet.
Because it did say shell building was quite my, quite my attention.
Right. So I just wondered in the process, because we're having a lot of discussion about all of these land developments that they're doing down there. Or is this even ready to move to that phase? Is it something that you guys are gonna want to see before it goes to the building permit stage?
No, I, I don't know, as I said, it's addressed to you. I don't know, had the building, I don't know what that, as I said, reference to. I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Well, I guess it depends which lot it is.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at it and have a discussion.
Well, I thought people had a sit down with planning commission when they were planning some...
Well, yeah, the building part, buildings
Yeah.
go basically through her and, uh, MDIA, you know?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, right, so I don't know. As I said, I didn't look at the prints, I don't know.
No, no, I'm, I'm just, yeah, they just came today.
Yes, yes, I, I opened.
Yeah, they just came, they just came today and when I walked in, Becky just pointed them out to me and said it was for Westgate. And I knew all of this other land development and planning commission activity was going on. So I wasn't sure if this was, and again, that was just a question I had. I haven't even had a chance to look at it, but after I do, I'll talk to you guys.
Probably could, it'd be, uh, lot four, right Larry? Would guess on that, could, how much the other ones? The sequence would be right to be lot four, wouldn't be right to be lot six.
Said it again.
The sequencing
Okay.
would be right for, if it's lot four. I, I just, I don't know, I think developers agreement was finalized and lots had closed.
Been a while, yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it, it's been a while for that.
I'll take a look at it and then I'll talk with Shannon and planning commission. Just make, I just want to make sure that something is not trying to be moved through before it's ready.
Well, that's, when you use the magic word sequencing.
Right.
And that's what sort of interests me because this is where we've had problems before.
Absolutely.
With this sequence, right?
And that's, that's kind of, that's an everywhere problem is you get the developers who just want to, you know, push forward. They want to do it yesterday and so it's not just a Big Beaver issue, but I just wanted to make sure, get, get some information.
But this is not a Mylar problem yet, right?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, alright, I'll be watching.
My waters have been eliminated, too.
I know, I'm glad.
Okay, the first item would be the, the roller rink on Route 18. We had some communication issues with the property owner in the past. So we did, we did call a meeting with them and their engineer and had a sit down. I actually put together a process packets so that they would see step one, step two, step three, so that there wouldn't be any more confusion hopefully. But it seems like the demolition's moving a little quicker now. If anybody's been watching, I think it looks great.
It's beautiful down there.
Yeah, it does. I mean, it's, they still have a lot of work to do, but it's just a huge, huge improvement. And they also did then submit their plans for the discussion on building a wall. They want to do an interior wall to separate the building. So they did submit those plans and MDIA is in the process of reviewing that. Right now, there was a question, again, that paper street question that pops up. So Mr. Fiesel had a question on the paper street because there is one that runs between the roller rink and that would be north of the roller rink. So there's actually a paper street that runs between that. There's some type of a complication with that. So I did actually speak with Shannon after we had the meeting and she was gonna do a little bit of research on it. And because she didn't report on it, I'm assuming she's still in the process of that, so that we can then give Mr. Fiesel an answer to his paper street question.
Yeah, and remember, I think his concern was that, that fellow who put the Jersey barriers there, it's a paper street, but then that blocks access to that other building that is not Mr. Fiesel in the rear.
Right.
And so you get into an issue with fire prevention.
Right.
Cause that's the only real access that you would have to that other building in the rear, that loading dock building I call it.
Right.
So I don't know where that would stand legally. I discussed that a little bit with, briefly in passing with the fire chief. And he, he wasn't sure that he would have any authority to tell Mr. Jersey Barrier, you can't block when that's the access, even though it's not but a paper street.
Right.
And it's not the same as building on a paper street, but it has to do with fire access to that rear building.
Right.
So I don't know where that would stand.
Yeah, so Shannon was actually, she, she, in the conversation I had with her, she was gonna do a little bit of research on that, on those topics. And then when she had that research in hand, so I'm assuming since she didn't report that she's still in process of researching it out. Um, I had a complaint of clutter at 116 Essie Street. This is, this has been, I've had a history with this property in the past, but I located the realty company, it's a.
No, we don't know where Essie Street is.
That is um, down in the, towards Darlington Lake, those, the little vacation.
Oh, that's, okay, yeah, there's two or three.
Yeah, there's only two or three of them. They're actually in Big Beaver, so it'd be the farthest road.
See, I don't think that's, I'm not questioning that that's the address. But I don't think Essie Street is in Big Beaver. The properties might be, but I don't, I don't know. I've never heard of. Donnie, have you ever plowed?
Yeah.
No, I never went down there. Okay, in thirty-three years, see, that's what made me question, what, what's this Essie Street?
I think I have the ownership, 116 Essie Street, Big Beaver.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, I understand that.
Oh, okay.
But, no, never mind, okay. In other words, that is not our street, I don't think.
I think it is, I think it's our road, yeah. It's right next to where Kathy McCorland lives, man, they're in there. But I think it's right inside Big Beaver. I mean, especially for a way you're in Darlington.
So you're thinking it's our road.
A piece of it, at least a piece of it is.
Okay, and for thirty-three years he's never plowed. That's interesting.
Was it?
I, I don't know.
I don't know.
But I remember we had trouble down there with a house years ago, before you even came.
Yeah, it's probably the same one.
Yeah, probably is, but, and I remember going down there and I was surprised that Big Beaver went that far. It was on the corner there of the two roads.
Yeah, I think it's listed off, listed on our road list.
Yeah, and it's only, it's, it's only like three or four houses.
Well, I understand that part, yeah.
And then it switches over to Darlington immediately, where that is, if it's in the middle of the road or where that line is. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. Anyhow, I had to, I had to locate. It's actually a rental, so just in, just for a heads up in case one of the neighbors would complain, you would then know that the rental company notified me that this week a crew will be out cleaning. I guess it's pretty bad, so I haven't been down to look at it.
Nobody's living in the house?
Um, there was actually a couple renting the house and I think the, the individual, the male is no longer there and they're not sure of the status of the female, is what I was told. If she's there or not.
You, you mean the realty company isn't sure?
The realty company's not sure who's there.
Yeah. So now, the realty company owns the property?
Correct.
Okay, so that's who you come down on, right?
Yeah, I had a conversation with them and they're sending a crew to clean it up, yeah, so hopefully by weeks end. So just in case somebody would call you guys, you'll, you'll have that information. Number three is the racetrack. Um, I've had a, a couple of calls again about noise, which crops up every so often. My comments are, are in the report, but from a zoning aspect, I don't really think I have too much of a leg to stand on because it's an approved use. So they've been, they were through the processes. It's been there way before me. So they have followed the processes that they have needed to follow from the beginning. They've had several zoning hearings when they've changed things and, and done different things. The second track was at least what I've been told was part of the original land.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Long, long time ago, so just because it's just recently built doesn't mean it's a new use. It still reverts back to that original use. Timing building went through the process with planning commission and so I don't really think from a zoning aspect, there's really anything that I can do to a use that was given permission to exist. If these individuals want to come in and meet with council, I told her she could certainly come to the meeting and express her concerns. Has she talked to the owners? Kind of of the position that Shannon was saying, I believe this is a civil issue that if she has a particular issue with them, if she feels it's disturbing her, maybe she needs to take a civil approach to that. I actually spoke to one of the neighbors, Jason, you might remember the, the guys who raised the Arabian horses close to the track. I actually spoke to one of those individuals who were directly behind it and he said it doesn't bother them, so. So again.
Sort of like beauty being in the eye of the beholder. You know, I live beside, was born beside a steel mill, so I don't know what to tell you.
So again, that's just a, just an information piece for you guys in case somebody would call you so that you're not blindsided by that type of a discussion. Again, I feel like if from my seat, there's very little I can do on an approved use and I'm not, I'm not a noise expert. I, you know, I'm not trained in tracking decibels and they had a man who had all of that information at the hearing, this, the noise expert.
I'm laughing. There are philosophies of noise. There are philosophies of how you measure noise. Now, you can think that I'm drunk and disorderly here, but I'm telling you, what we sat through in this room years and years ago, my head spun. Expert witnesses from both sides of the fence, look figuratively, and it just, I, I, I don't know what to tell you.
So again, based on that, that they presented that information and it was approved, there's from a zoning seat, there's very little that I can do. And again, my last comment is if there is something else that I can do from a legal standpoint, based on a conversation with our solicitor, I'm happy to explore those options, but I'm really not seeing any.
Donna, let me just elaborate here. Twice, the one neighbor who I think lives where the horse, whatever it is, is, uh, I'm sorry, I got distracted with, rude interruption, but anyway, yeah, I wish people would turn these things off or not bring them. I really would, okay? But anyway, so in talking, telling you what happened, the history here, the guy that owned that house originally was very upset when the racetrack went in, owned that acreage and house. And so therefore twice he sued the borough. Now, the cer, the borough won both cases, but it cost the taxpayers, you mean, twenty-five thousand dollars to defend ourselves. And he lost both cases. That's, that's all I can tell you. And part of the issue was the noise. So I don't know. I don't know what you can tell people that, you know.
And here's what I tell them, I'm sympathetic to it. I mean, I, I'm sympathetic to if you're, if you're, if something's disturbing you. I do, I feel, I feel badly about that. But again, from a zoning aspect.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
You know, from what, from what I can do, I can't step into something and like, like you just said, Jason, I can't step into something, get into a legal situation trying to enforce something where they're gonna come back and say, wait a second, this is, this is an approved, you know, we're doing what you told us we could do, so I'm not sure what the, the answer would be, but again, just for information in case
Yeah, we.
this individual would approach you.
Yeah, thank you.
You have a little bit of background. The Turnpike Distribution Center. I had a conversation with Tom G. Ordono, he's a contractor and he's working for them. And we've talked about this in the past where they have had water pressure issues and you have Iron Mountain in there who has to have a very, very, their, their fire suppression system is like top notch because of the storage of documents. They, it's just unbelievable. And so they have, it's not a constant, but an occasional water pressure problem. And they have to address that. So he says that the owner wants to resolve this on their own by doing their own water tank. It would be forty feet. He was talking about placement in the front, just some general discussion about that. And I would like to call one of our famous pre-meetings. I'd like to have a sit down so that he can present to, to the group of people, including the engineer, like the engineer involved in the discussion, if that would be appropriate, to explain to everybody in detail what they're, what they would like to do.
Donna, I wanna just kind of add to that. I actually called, this is what I called you about the other day. I got notified about this problem because the fire department's getting notified about the problem. They failed two water pressure tests. So I was asked if there's anything we can do to kind of help resolve the issue and I said, first of all, we gotta find out what the problem is and why. My understanding so far, and I wasn't bringing anything up yet, cause I didn't have any definitive answers, um, and just trying to kind of talk to people and figure out the situation. What I've heard from not the people directly involved is that Baker has something to do with that, I guess. I don't know if they designed the building or this, I'm not sure yet. But one entity basically is blaming the other, like one says it's one person's fault, somebody says it's the other person's fault. So I'm trying to kind of figure that all out. What, okay, well, what is whose fault? Like what is the problem? Why is this happening? Because from a public safety issue on top of the issue that Iron Mountain's having, it becomes a big deal, especially up there. You know, we've had the fire in Lindy Paving, that kind of thing, so we need to figure out why it's happening. I do, I would like to be included in this if you don't mind, and I'm still gonna continue some of the research to figure out what the issue is, if we can figure it out. I don't know if we will, but I'm gonna try, so.
And I think they've just hit the point where it's not that they want you to stop trying to figure out what the problem is, they want to resolve it and they're just gonna take it upon themselves to resolve it in their own way.
Put their own logic.
And I know it's their insurance company because they're failing those tests because that happened a few years ago. We had this same discussion. And so they're getting heat from, you know, and pressure from other places. They have to have that resolved.
Gotcha.
So they just want to take that step and do it on their own. So if that's appropriate to have another little pre-meeting.
I think anything we can do.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
Since they're gonna solve the problem for them.
Yeah.
Good heavens, that's wonderful.
So I will get in contact with with a couple of council, get some dates and times that are appropriate. I'll get with you Larry and then try to schedule something with this individual.
Okay.
Okay? That's pretty much all I have. Anybody have any questions for me?
This is very short for me.
I tried to keep it short. There's a Penn Penguins game, I'm keeping.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm keeping track on my phone, but don't ask me what the last, the score was.
This is, this is the do or die.
This is it. They were just losing, they were, they were losing two to one last time I checked.
You had me say that, didn't you?
I did, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's all we have, um, Donna, okay.
Engineership.
Donna?
Engineership.
Engineership, alright, okay. Larry?
Yep. Alright, going to the monthly report. First item, Westgate Commonwealth Drive Extension. That was approved by a planning commission, the, the review letter detachment A. There's no comments, so it would be conditional approval, it would just be a straight approval. And that's for the subdivision plan for the Commonwealth Drive pavement and public utility expansion. And that's a road extension over that gas, is that Buckeye? Whatever the high pressure line is that crosses there.
Dominion.
Dominion. So if council would want to make a motion to approve the Westgate Commonwealth Drive Extension subdivision plan, that would be appropriate. And that could be, once it's signed, recorded at the county.
I'll make a motion to approve the Westgate Commonwealth Drive Extension subdivision plan.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Jeff. Michelle?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Myself.
Next item, Westgate Business Park Lot Six. Dennis talked about it. The comment letter is provided, the green letter attachment B. No action recommended tonight. Planning Commission did table that meeting and we did call the developer, requested he attend the next planning commission meeting to present his development.
And he gave his form.
He gave his form, so. Hopefully he'll tell. Wall compressor Station, attachment C. Last month, it's basically the same update. We sent them a letter, we're quite, telling them they have to do land development. They sent a, I call it a rough sketch in, which we respond to saying, need to submit a land development application and also its homeowners management, so. We're waiting for a response on that. Attachment C is that letter, if you're curious. Valley Waste, no change.
Wait a minute, Larry, so they are complying to some degree at this point?
They've been submitting stuff, they just haven't submitted a complete application.
Okay.
Valley Waste, that should be in italics, there's no change since the last meeting. That was a pre-application meeting. Zoning ordinance, uh, so the planning commission's reviewing that proposed zoning use table. And then once the planning commission's made a recommendation, we could bring up to council and that would update your entire zoning ordinance, cause that would apply to all your, that would remove, pull it out of each individual section and just do a one summary table from what, what there is now. Uh, we're also gonna, we're reading the conditional use language. We're gonna review that with Shannon. There's some goofy language in there, we would, probably get good to get cleaned up, so.
That's an interesting way of describing.
Yeah. In layman's terms.
That's right, we get the idea.
Uh, subdivision land development ordinance, so we have started on that and that was discussed in Dennis's report also. Uh, subdivision land development ordinance, so we have started on that, and that was discussed, uh, Dennis's report also. There were a couple elements that were discussed at the planning commission there. Uh, items seven and eight, there is no, and nine, there is no change, that's Wessex Corporation Development, AKA the casino, Turnpike Commission Beaver River, Beaver River Bridge Replacement, then the SH Group subdivision plan, did they, they never submitted a final plan, did they, or did they?
Hosted, look, they did some of the, what would they do?
Miding the two lots.
Yeah, and there were minor comments, and it was approved by council, I just don't know if they ever submitted a final plan, I guess not, I thought that was.
Okay, that's Hosted.
Yeah, Chairman Hosted, that's it.
Okay, oh, I see, that's what the SH is, okay, yeah, cause I wonder what, they're just gonna, Tim, they're gonna put it back to one.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Can I, can I ask a question or make a comment?
Of course.
If, if they delay in doing what they need to do, would somebody please let me know, cause they're an outstanding building permit with that as well? So I would advise Clyde to not issue an occupancy until we know that they've done what they've needed to do with removing that lot line.
Okay, and what's a building permit got to do with, I'm, I'm lost.
Well, he, this is, this is kind of a long story, but in summary, he got ahead of himself without obtaining the permit. So he was doing the planning commission lot, line removal, and then jumped ahead with renovations in the building. So MDIA let him proceed and get caught up, parallel to your lot line removal, with the hoping it would all end at the same spot, but now you're telling me there's a, there's a delay in that, in your lot line removal process, so if he finishes up with his renovations, MDIA issues an occupancy permit, and you'll still have that outstanding.
Lot line.
I want that, I want to know that that's completed before he's issued an occupancy permit.
Can you check our one twenty minutes, did you do something for Hosted?
I can't, I can't remember, off, off my head.
It was actually approved in February, it was, uh, approved with a minor comment here at council, and I think the planning commission approved it in February also. So it was just a fin, he submits a final plan and he's done, that's.
Okay, so you need a final plan.
Right, right, and I'll check it, and then I'll recommend signature.
Okay. Okay, just, again, so I know that when I'm having the building permit discussion, I can bring this discussion into it, saying there's something lagging behind, that you need to, you need to get this housekeeping issue, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Larry.
No problem. Uh, First Energy Transmission Main Project, so that's an overhead electrical transmission main replacement project, it's proposed for, to start in August. Um, they did get a call today from their engineer, uh, part of the project includes replacement of existing overhead electric crossing Silvania Drive in the borough. Uh, they're gonna have to do driveway permit for temporary access drives, they're gonna have to do a heavy hauling bond to protect the road. Uh, but other than that, it's an existing line replacements, or I'm not aware of any other borough requirements or something like that, for crossing over Silvania Drive, which is over by the western portion of the borough. Uh, I don't know, I, I put that sentence at the end.
Yeah, I saw it, yeah.
Remember last year, we talked about the land agent that contacted me about a stub pole on the borough wetland, a stub pole to support a transmission main, and he said that project was supposed to come to two thousand twenty. I asked that consultant today if this is the same project, he, he wasn't aware, he was gonna check, so. Yeah, cause we still had to, we were supposed to meet with them in the field, and then all of a sudden it was, please me, please me, please, uh, it's two thousand twenty, don't worry about it, so. Uh, Dominion West Loop Project, uh, we haven't, we have not received a submission yet, since we had that pre-application meeting with that applicant. Uh, last item, we talked about the road tour, so we'll get that scheduled. Uh, and this year, we'll do it different than we have previous years, we'll use that database that we prepared, probably, I think it was a couple, it was a while ago. Uh, but we have all the dimensions of the roads built into that database, so once I put in, uh, condition of the road, and I could talk about percent base repair, uh, what the options are, mill overlay, overlay, uh, there's a new PennDOT approved material offer, thin overlays, where they use a polymer asphalt. Stronger than the traditional wearing course, uh, a lot of municipalities, and PennDOT's using it.
How long's it been out?
Couple of years, before it, it was called micro pavement, for about the last ten years, and only one paver was doing it. Uh, this new stuff, it's called thin laid asphalt, and a lot of contractors are using it now. There, a lot of borough municipality road programs are starting to include it, cause it is stronger. I mean, there's been issues with the new asphalt mixes called, if you've heard, SuperPave.
Yeah, yeah, that was years ago.
Yeah, yeah, but the old Marshall mix had a lot of oil in it, uh, part of, you know, going greener, they removed a lot of the oil, where you see newer roads cracking quicker, cause it's a drier mix, it's just, especially low traffic roads, it's, it's a problem. Where you have to do a lot of crack sealing, uh, you gotta seal the roads to keep up with the roads, where traditionally you didn't have to.
New girl in town call?
Thin laid asphalt.
Thin laid asphalt. Might be something for us to think about.
I agree. So we're, we do the road tour, obviously there's some streets we're discussing tonight, um, we'll include that as part of the road tour, include that in the database and do that ranking system, and like I said, we, we've done for different municipalities where we've come up with like a five or ten year plan, talk about budget and see how that pans, so, all right?
That's good. Okay, thank you Larry, okay, Mayor's report is Nolan Wood, cause he's in Boston, and do we have an executive session?
She does.
Oh, okay, all right, this time, uh, we're gonna go into executive session because.
To discuss what, kind of, I should.
What's recent.
Personality.
Personality, thank you.
Thank you. Proximate time of that? I wonder if it's approximate.